I'd like to welcome everyone. It's nice to see such a good turnout here for our academic and extracurricular meeting, February tenth, two thousand and twenty-five. And we have, once again, a packed agenda. So we will be trying to keep as close as we can to the timeframes that were given on the agenda. And the first item up is our invention convention.
Yeah, with us tonight, Dr. Rigor, Avery Schneider, Jack Welsh, Emmett Wright, and Grant Rosendale, who are finalists for the Invention Convention Contest, which challenges young minds to come up with creative solutions, scientifically-based creative solutions to problems. So I'll turn it over to the gentlemen if they'd like to show what they've come up with.
Hi, I'm Jack Welsh.
I'm Avery Schneider.
I'm Grant Rosendale.
And I'm Emmett Wright. And this is our invention.
The Power Plant Gym.
In a world where obesity is a growing concern, the CDC reporting that twenty percent of adults across the United States are living with obesity, we recognize the urgent need for a solution. Many individuals struggle with motivation in the gym, often citing high membership costs and the lack of compelling reasons to work out. With over sixty-four million Americans that entered gym memberships in two thousand and nineteen, and a total U.S. population of over three hundred forty-six million in November two thousand and twenty-four, we realize that there's a massive opportunity to make a change.
That's where the Power Plant Gym comes in. Our revolutionary gym concept harnesses the power of crank-powered energy, creating a unique workout environment that not only benefits the health, but also contributes to a larger cause. If you look at our survey data, you'll see that about seventy percent of people say they would be more motivated to go to the gym if the membership were free. Our research indicates individuals in the age group of eighteen through thirty-four exercise the most compared to the other age groups. And there are eighty million people in the U.S. in that age group. This is an opportunity to make a big difference in our society.
Of course, we know that basic gyms already exist. But imagine a gym where your hard work literally fuels the facility. Every pedal lift and crank transforms your hard work into electricity, reducing costs and creating a sustainable environment. The more you exercise, the more energy you generate. People have invented bicycles that can create energy, but no one has come up with the idea to create an entire gym where humans are harvesting electricity as they work out. This innovative approach will allow members to earn credits towards their monthly gym membership, making fitness not only accessible, but also rewarding. Power Plant Gym is going to be the next revolution in fitness facilities across the country.
Our solution came from our passion. Our passion for health and wellness, along with our deep commitment to taking care of our one and only planet, sparked the idea for the Power Plant Gym. We stored brainstorming ideas on how we could combine these two passions. We believe that by promoting fitness and sustainability, we can inspire others to lead healthier lives while also protecting the environment for future generations. We wanted to create a space where individuals can thrive physically while contributing positively to the planet's well-being. After researching different kinds of energy, we got the idea to use crank energy to create the Power Plant Gym.
The biggest obstacle in our process was time and availability of resources for our prototype. Our prototype's journey began with basic designs of connects pieces, allowing us to visualize and simulate what we were going to use. Then we started to upgrade with erector sets that not that have crank-powered circuits to show how working out can generate energy. If we use this crank generator, then to simulate a larger piece of gym equipment, it will power these lights.
As you, a part of our invention convention was to create a logbook. And if you were to look in it, the estimated cost to produce a real crank-powered treadmill would be around one thousand dollars. A lap pull-down machine would be around six hundred and twenty-five dollars. Just like our prototype demonstrates electricity by the illumination of the light, imagine the energy you could generate while using multiple devices at Power Plant Gym. While the, while our prototype doesn't serve as a wide-scale demonstration of what Power Plant Gym would how, how Power Plant Gym would work, take a look at these AI-generated images of what Power Plant Gym could look like. Every push and pedal you take fuels your workout and brightens your path to fitness. At the heart of our gym is a cutting-edge system based on the principles of electromagnetic induction, initially discovered by Michael Faraday in eighteen thirty-two. fossil fuel-powered plants, hydroelectric-powered plants, and wind turbines all use steam, water, or air pressure as a mechanical force to spin a shaft and and an electric generator. You can produce electricity by spinning the shaft yourself. As you engage in your workout, the mechanical energy you produce is converted into electric energy, as you can see in the light, through a process that involves rotating magnets and copper coils. This means that the more you exercise, the more energy you generate to the gym, and the more you can earn towards your monthly membership.
The CDC states that obesity can lead to chronic health issues and accounts for nearly one hundred seventy-three billion dollars in spending each year.
That's a lot of money.
So we, so we invite you to join us at the Power Plant Gym, where exercise powers your journey into fitness and helps drive a movement towards a healthier, more empowering community. Together, we can transform the way we think about exercise and tackle the obesity epidemic. Hang on. Thank you for learning about Power Plant Gym.
Where fitness fuels the future.
This is our takeaway, along with a handpicked flashlight. You can pass this around and increase your grip strength.
This is amazing. Absolutely amazing.
Anyone have any questions?
So amazing. I'd be afraid to ask a question. I might.
Yeah, because I don't have an intelligent question to ask.
Oh my gosh, it's just amazing.
From your research.
Your presentation just is unbelievable with that one.
Thank you.
No pun intended, gentlemen. What sparked your interest?
Um, I think just so many people being lazy.
I'm happy he didn't look at me when he said.
Yeah, I guess like we have to take care of our planet too, so like.
Yeah, it's great.
Yeah, like the energy that we're used, the cleanest type of energy that can be produced. And so it's kind of just helping the environment in general.
Now, would it keep track of each individual person's generation of, of the energy?
So yeah.
You get a membership card and like on the device, there's like a little thing that like identifies you. And like you can earn credit towards your gym membership.
Right. So you could actually compete then. It could also turn to be people competing with each other to earn more electricity.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's cool.
It's awesome. So what's the next step?
Um, I mean, I would say upgrading our prototype and just upgrading our script as well.
And then do you move on to a next level?
If you win, you can go to Nationals.
If you win, you go to Nationals.
Yeah.
And when is the next competition?
On Wednesdays.
This Wednesday?
Yeah.
Oh, wow. Okay. What do you go for?
Um, Hershey.
Oh, good.
Well, good luck. That's exciting. Good luck.
Keep us posted. We are so proud. This is a high point of our night.
Where would Nationals be?
Uh, the Henry Ford Museum in Michigan.
Mr. Schneider's been there.
And I don't even know what grade you're going.
We're all in fifth grade.
Fifth grade.
Yeah.
So, so one of the other advantages is that the drag on actually pumping or whatever would actually increase the workout to the individual.
Yes.
Okay, because the treadmill or the bike or whatever, if you're turning a generator to do that, it makes it harder. Okay, so that may be something else you want, you might want to point out that it also has an additional benefit to the members of the gym that are participating in that.
Yeah, yes.
Thank you.
Very, very impressive work, gentlemen.
Everything's impressive.
This is like a college research study.
It really is. It's excellent work. Good luck on Wednesday and hopefully we add it back to Nationals.
So if they're doing this now.
Oh my gosh, I can't. I sound like I was watching a.
Oh my gosh, I agree. Oh my god. And I keep thinking, they're fifth graders.
I'm gonna go get Sally in the competition.
He wants to compete.
I do too. Why? I've gone last two years.
Oh, I go to Riverside Fitness. Are you gonna be able to talk that?
Wow, we're gonna have to talk about, actually that, because I got told, Mr. Henry, that was a perfect lead-in to what we're gonna talk about.
Oh, that's right. There you go.
Which was the unexpected plus.
We got off to school tomorrow. Thanks. Oh, oh. Where, where Hershey? I'm in Orlando, but she got the dance team.
Uh, good luck there.
We're gonna go from Hershey toward Orlando. Okay, nice. So nice meeting you. So nice to meet you.
Thanks, guys. Outstanding.
They're part of our gifted program and they started that in the.
Because we went to number two, we had the ICTC Diversifying Occupations, J. P. Principal, Mr. Worthington, and occupations coordinator, Miss Kathy.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Heinrich asked that we come down and just talk a little bit about our diversified occupations program. So maybe Indiana School District Board will have a little better understanding of what we do. And like I told Mr. Heinrich, he said, can you top that? I don't know if I could top that, but that was a perfect lead-in to what we're gonna talk about. So I'll give you a little bit of history of the DO program. About four years ago, we were asked by several of the districts, what do we do with a student who has not reached that senior year and has no career plan? They can't complete our programs. They're designed to be three-year program, although we can accelerate students through two years. They'll get limited certifications. They won't get that completion. Is there a program out there that can address this need? Because a lot of our districts do not do the work-study. And when you have young entrepreneurs like that, they may not be interested in all of our program or even the program that Indiana area has to offer. Or maybe they've completed all your programs. Maybe they're your high flower, flyer, your gifted child who's accelerated through. So we looked at a program called, and the actual SIP code is a SIP-coded program. It can be completed in one year. It's a senior-only program. And it's thirty-two point zero one zero five. It's called job-seeking or job-changing skills. We call it diversified occupations. So in that year, if we have a student who has a need or an interest outside of what we offer, we've had students placed with Mr. Harley. We've had, we have a student placed right here, Mr. Cronover, right now. And we don't have an architectural program. You may offer some architectural classes, but it's not a program or a completion. They can be placed in the workforce in that area of interest. So we've had people in medical field. We've had people lawyers. Well, we've had, like I said, Mr. Harley and his architectural firm. And they get exposure to that field. And what that exposure allows them to do is this, the right field for me. Before I invest four years or however many years of college, hundreds of thousands of dollars, they get a taste of that in the workforce and what that job requirement would be. With that, there is a soft skills or a class that they have to take. As part of that, there's an OCT exam at the end of that. And they have to have forty-five minutes. If it's done through the ICTC, it's forty-five minutes a week of that class with the soft skills. And we use Career Safe. And Mrs. Jones, she teaches that through Google Classroom. And with the employer, they have to have a minimum one hundred and fifty hours work, or fifteen hours a week throughout the school year. That's a paid internship, so they get paid for that time as they learn. So it's very similar to our co-op, and we'll talk about some of the other opportunities that we have. But for a group of students like this, who have that entrepreneurial spirit and they have different interests outside maybe what your educational programs offer or what we offer at ICTC, it would be a perfect fit for a student like that. Because we can place them, as long as we have an industry partner that's willing to take that student in a field of their interest that they have either, they want to go in a career or they want to go on to educational opportunities. And they can see, is that truly?
Go ahead and leave the door open now.
The right place for me. So I'm gonna let Mrs. Jones talk more about the program in some detail and co-op and pre-apprenticeships and the other stuff that we have.
Um, just to kind of add to what Mr. Worthington said, that the, the DO program is, the requirement for the student is that they go to work half a day, basically. For an Indiana student, they're going and doing their sending school classes in the morning and then going to the workplace in the afternoon every day. If, almost every day. Like, for instance, Mr. Harley was, he doesn't work, like, work on Fridays, right? Mondays. Which day though, you didn't?
I work six days a week.
You work seven days a week. The office, the office wasn't ever been there, yeah. So the student that we had placed there last year only worked four days a week and then that, that fifth day.
But you work the hours.
Yes, yeah. So as long as they get that fifteen hours a week, it's mainly in the afternoon, it has to be for at least one hundred and fifty school days. And in addition to that, they have that online kind of soft skills, employability skills, modules that they do. They will also earn an OSHA certification. So if you're talking about a student that needs a pathway to graduation, that's, that's something that's.
That could fulfill this requirement.
Yes, yeah. So that's kind of the diversified occupations program in a nutshell. Actually, let me say this, that last year, we only had four students enrolled in the program. This year, we currently have fifteen. That's with the help of, we were able to write a grant with Career Track this year that paid for the wages and workers' compensation for ten of the students. It did help out situations where the employer couldn't pay, couldn't pay the student. So that was a blessing through the, through Career Track. We hope to get that grant renewed because we did use all ten slots of, of that grant, so.
But typically the employer pays, did you say?
Normally, the employer, the employer pays. And it's a choice of what the employer, yeah, they can pay what they want.
Can you, can you pay, how much does that grant pay?
That grant, it currently pays ten fifty an hour, so it's not a lot of money. But it is, you know, to some, a young person that's looking at getting the experiences, experience is the most valuable thing. Because like a job shadow, a student can go and see the, see it on a job shadow, but they don't get that day-to-day feeling of what it's like, yeah. So it is very eye-opening for some students.
From the employer's point of view, you're hiring, you're bringing in a student with virtually no skill. And so having a little supplement to, to bridge that, okay. By the time the young lady was, was through the school year, she was useful. And so we, we import her over summer. When she comes back from vacation, that's where we import her. Uh, you know, we didn't have that program when you were in the fourth grade.
Right.
But after I got involved and I got the grant.
Because I apologize if you said this, but can it be any level of students that attend the ICTC?
It's just.
Seniors only.
Senior only. And it's actually students that don't, that are not ICTC students that are coming from your regular, you know, your regular ed classes.
Yeah, they wouldn't be considered, you know, what other programs are considered capstone programs? So it's that three-year experience. They wouldn't qualify for one of those programs.
Do the students set up their own internships? Do they make that connection or do you have a list of?
As of right now, I'm doing a lot of phone calls, finding employers. I do have a lot of connections and building that.
Director research.
Yes. But if a student actually has a, an in or a connection with somebody already, that's, that's fine.
Sally, we were briefed on this during the Perkins Committee meeting a couple of weeks ago. One of the things that, one of the reasons I would encourage Rob to bring these folks in and talk about it is that I think we also need some bottom-up driving this where the students themselves, I think, need to go to their counselor, their principal, whatever, and say, you know, I, I'm interested in something other than whatever. And, and so I think if we can get this out into the, to the staff at the high school where they can promote this, we'll be able, that will help drive this as well.
That was gonna be my next question. How do you promote yourself?
A few, a few weeks ago, I was at, at Indiana High School for their careers committee, or career, I don't know what it's called, to talk to some of the instructors. And the guidance counselors are on board and they're the ones that are promoting it just like they would promote one of our other programs at the Tech Center.
And that's why we're seeing that growth. The initial year, we had one student. It was from Homer Center. Last year was four. Now we're sixteen. It's starting to get out. And what Mrs. Jones has done a good job of is when we do our typical enrollment now in our shadows, when we meet with the counselors and we go over that enrollment for next year, we talk about this program. And then we talk about students that they think may be good fits. We interview those students. We go through the whole process with them. And we met with, I don't know how many students last year. Sometimes we can't find a placement depending on what their ask is. There are some fields that are, like the medical field, that's a hit or miss depending on what they want to do because there's HIPAA and other things and they're underage. And a lot of them, they just can't take them, you know, in certain offices. But if we do, we use like Slappy chiropractic. We use other ones where they, where they fit. So sometimes the challenge is just finding that partner that will accept that student.
But one of the things they have is not only do they market to the students, but they also market to the community.
Yeah.
And so you're building up a stable of people who you can easily pick up the phone and call. And when we've had a good success with, with the student, I'm more prone to do it again.
Correct. Now, Mr. Harley did say one thing that is factual. These students.
I only wait and just take notes.
About the program. That these students are coming, and depending on their background, they have little or no skill in that area. The difference between this program and our co-op program is when we put a student in co-op, we're telling you they can do X, Y, and Z.
Right.
Because they read on our program.
Right.
And that makes a difference sometimes to the employer who's taking them. If that investment, do I want that or not? And like Mr. Harley said, in his, his field, he understands if I take a kid who doesn't have a college degree, there are chances of having that experience, personally, not, yeah.
Right. They just, they just can't perform at the level that I expect people to perform at. But, but when you have an ambitious young person in the office, eager and interested in the field, you know, in, in the space of a year, you can train them to do some things that are useful. She's not gonna design, you know, the forty-two minute hour building in the summer. But she, you know, she, she also sees what we do and how, and her commitment into the field is much better than mine ever was. I had no idea when I was going to go to school. I didn't have this experience.
And what we hope transpires is, like Mr. Harley said, he had a good experience with that student that maybe four or five years down the road, when she has those skills, that may enter to a job opportunity. I remember you. I'll hire you.
Right. Right. Plus the connections they make even during that internship.
Correct.
Yeah. That's great.
Any questions from our committee?
And I'll also remind you that Mrs. Cunningham's online. She's also.
Oh, yes.
So.
Thank you. No, just to say real quick too about, you had mentioned, mentioned co-op, cooperative education. We also, there's thirty-two kids involved in co-op right now. And those are students that are our students at the Tech Center that are going out into the workforce in the trades.
That they study.
Sector that they study. We also have one student that's in a pre-apprenticeship program with JWF. So that student is earning and working through the first twenty-five steps of that apprenticeship with JWF that while he's still in high school. And we do have another student in a, what's called a pilot program for cosmetology. You guys all, and I gave you handouts with all this information on it too, that that pilot program through cos, with cosmetology helps students obtain the hours that are necessary for them to sit for their cosmetology licensing test. If a student needs, and cosmetology needs twelve hundred and fifty hours, and sometimes with no cancellations and all of those things that happen, it's hard for the student to get that twelve hundred and fifty hours. So this, they would work in the evenings at a salon, but instead of being paid, they get paid in hours. So they get paid in documented, documented time.
Further state licensure.
Yeah, so those are the other programs that we have going on at the Tech Center as far as career readiness.
Yes, and work-study kind of protections.
So, so Kathy, JWF is Johnstown welding and fabricating?
Yes.
And they do a lot of Defense Department work, as I understand?
Yes.
Okay, and they're a heavy machine manufacturer.
Yeah, like Humvee and stuff like that.
Yes.
Yes, very.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate you guys coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Stuco Field Trip to Washington, DC.
I think, oh, there you go. There's Dr. Minnick. Okay.
Yeah, our, our ladies were unable to make it tonight, so I'm happy to sit in for them. We had a misstep in scheduling this field trip in the asking permission since it is a state field trip. So I'm here just to present what the background of the field trip is. And it's very much like the field trip we used to take as a sixth grade. It's a student council trip though. So our student leaders, they've, they've done all the fundraising. This trip is scheduled for March fourteenth. We're going to take the trip down to Washington, DC, you know, visit various government institutions. It's a great exercise in youth leadership and civic responsibility. And we'll visit such historic landmarks as the Lincoln Memorial, Martin Luther King Memorial, Smithsonian Museum, amongst other things. This is, this is a long day. It's very much like the trip we used to take. We usually leave early in the morning, around six AM, and get back somewhere around midnight. So there's, the only connection to the district would be two teachers that are chaperoning and lead substitutes. Otherwise, we have two teachers, multiple parent chaperones. And I, I've also agreed to go along with this one. And it's an incredible opportunity for our student leaders to see the nation's capital and all the wonderful things that are, that are there. And with your permission, I would like to proceed with that trip as planned.
I think it's excellent. I wish we could reinstitute the whole grade going.
Yeah.
Me too.
That was fun. I went on that trip a couple times.
Yeah, it was fun.
As a teacher.
No, as a principal. I never taught sixth grade. Any questions or?
Obviously, we support the trip and we support its expansion in the future, so we're more excited about the work they've done.
It's on the agenda for tonight, right?
It is indeed.
Great.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Summer music program.
Hi. So this is a, a repeat ask from last year. We had the summer music program. Last year, it was very successful. We had seventy-six kids enrolled in it for the summer. And so I'm just asking for basically if we can do it again. Last year, I originally asked for five thousand and then we had enough interest that we had to come back and ask for another thousand and the board granted that. So the proposal is for six thousand dollars to run the summer music program this year again. And the only other change, last year, we only opened it to, it was fifth to twelfth grade that was available because it was kind of late getting, like, we didn't get all the balls rolling early enough in the year to start the fourth graders. So this year, we would like to let kids start instruments, so just make it grades four to twelve, which doesn't really change anything here. But I did see the agenda motion said grades five to twelve, but it would be four to twelve. I don't know if that's a big deal or not.
If you make a change.
Okay. Do you have any questions about it or?
Questions or concerns?
It's excellent. It's going again and.
Yeah, we were really thankful to get it back up and running and it was well received.
Last year, I encouraged you to look to work with the university to get some music, music students as, as interns. The junior highs doing that with the. It'd be a way to extend your six thousand dollars. So if you could certainly, in the last year, I'm, you know, we were behind the eight ball.
Yeah.
So I'm going to encourage you this year to pursue that and see if we can find some additional.
We had, last year, we went to the high school. IUP already has its own summer program, so there's a little bit of a conflict with IUP. But we, we did ask the high school kids if they wanted to intern. We just didn't have a taker, but I'll keep doing it.
Yeah, yeah, we'll keep doing that. And, and, and if you can take some of that money and, and, and pay them, okay? And you get people who, who get kids, teaching kids, university students, high school students, and you have some talented, you have some very talented high school performers.
Right.
So I'm, I'm going to encourage you to, to pursue that a little bit harder this year than you did last year. Mainly because you were so far behind when we started this thing. You were, I, you were, you were like, you were like two months from now.
It was like, yeah, maybe in March or April, but yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it was pretty late March.
The only, the only question I have is do you anticipate another seventy-six students? Or do you think it'll be more than that?
I think it could be more, especially when the program ran in the past, we, all of the third graders, we hyped them up at the end of the year, say, hey, you have to start band next year. And they're so excited to start at the end of third grade and we give them their instruments, and then they would take the summer lessons. So we didn't do that last year, and we're gonna do that this year, so we, we should have.
We have more.
More interest.
I bet. How many teachers teach at them?
Um, we had three last year, it was me, Scott Cameron, Casey Williams.
We're anticipating a hundred kids in fourth and fifth grade band. At, at the new Eisenhower is, is what, is what you promised. Well, my, my question. And, and you're still shaking your head yes.
We had our concert, we had our first performance concert, and there were kids on stage.
Yeah, there's a.
How many?
Over a hundred for fourth grade.
My que, my, my question.
That was both, yeah, both schools, fourth grade.
My question is, last year, we went from five to six. Is, and, and I know we get six because we're figuring on similar amount. But if we're actually anticipating more, is that gonna drive the cost up or we need to make it?
Well, there's some problems if there's only three of them. So that's why I encourage them to become six or eight. And, and, and make some magic.
Yeah, we.
Sounds like he's offering you more money.
I'm not exactly offering more money.
But I would rather. There's a chance we could come back, now that the thing that we.
I would rather make sure you have enough to do the job you're trying to do.
Right, we can also make, the program runs a little bit more efficiently when we have the beginners, because the beginners are all starting at the same level. So we can put two or three or four of them together because they're all to be exactly the same thing. Versus a kid that's in ninth grade, they're all, you can't necessarily lump them together because they're at different levels. So, yes, we might, depending on the interest, we could end up needing more, but I don't know yet.
You also go to the orchestra, you don't go to this band, you also go to.
It's instrumental, yeah.
Any, any instrument, so the, so the poor kid on the soonest, you're helping her.
Right.
Be free that the kids do it.
The kids pay some of it. We have a broken down, a, a regular enrollee is ten dollars per lesson. So fifty bucks for the family for the, for one kid. Eighty dollars if you have two or more for a family. Then we do a free and reduced lunch rate. I think it's, it's half, it's twenty-five for one student for five, five lessons and fifty for two or more students for your family. And the district subsidizes the rest of it.
Good. Anything else?
This is on the agenda for approval tonight. So the proposal you sent was shared with you, proven against this package.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Zach.
Next, combat robotics at the senior high school.
Mr. Heinrich invited us to come speak tonight a little bit about the idea of the combat robotics. A lot of terminology and a lot of alliances with what's happening at the junior high schools. We'll try to kind of flesh out some of those terms. In a meeting a couple of weeks ago with Mr. McQuaid and Mr. Heinrich about the idea of having a combat robotics program at the senior high school. We currently teach two courses on robotics that are using a VEX system. They are competitive in nature in that there is arena and there's some internal competition. The idea of a combat robotics program would be something more of a gladiator style, like you're familiar with gentlemen are using at the junior high school. Some of the resistance or some folks have wondered why we haven't been doing this in the past. It's a little bit different at the senior high level. These fellows built their program, kind of started their own league within, internally at the junior high school. The best likely fit for us at the senior high would be a program called BOTS IQ. Best thing you can do is associate it with your little league team or a, a typical sports team like that, where it's a sanctioned league you gotta enroll within and follow their rules and their terms of service. Typically, they'll compete at a university like Robert Morris or California University. There are some local districts that have some of these bots and have participated in this event. A lot of the suburbia Pittsburgh schools are pretty famous for doing well at these competitions. And it's a highly competitive competition. So at this point in time, with the schedules moving out to our ninth through eleventh graders now to, to look at what the senior high schedule is going to be like, we put a course title in describing kind of what I had mentioned here to gauge interest in the students, to see how that will work with scheduling. It's a spending board approval on there, and we're working to find out what student interest is. We're working to look at facilities at the senior high school that have a place to implement and kind of rehearse with these bots. And programming and budget works to, to kind of get things off the ground here a little bit. BOTS IQ, we've reached out to them, there is an email contact person there. We have some familiarity with that competition, but there's also a lot to learn again, emerging into that new league. They offer some startup assistance there. And, yeah, there's a lot of other pieces come on this too. So that's kind of why we're here tonight, and it's kind of the underlying topic or direction where we go. We've got a wide list of things to flesh out here in the upcoming months. And I think we'll have much more to, to bring towards approval when it gets time like that. That's the introduction.
Yeah, the BOTS IQ program is, is unique in the fact that since we have expressed interest, what they will do is they will pair us up with a specific manufacturer or a specific company and industry as kind of like a mentorship, so that they can kind of help us with the engineering behind it. They also will offer a thousand fifty dollars as startup money for the first two years. And then the third year, I believe it drops down to a thousand or nine fifty. And then the fourth year, it drops down to like nine hundred or eight fifty, so, or five hundred even, yeah. So it's, it's used to promote, to get the robots up and, up and going off of the, off the ground here. So we put together a proposal based off of what the junior high program looks like. What would that look like at the high school? So as you flip through the proposal, of course, everybody's gonna look at the numbers because that's where we're gonna, that's where we're gonna migrate to. So a little bit about the numbers, the, the startup cost looks really high, but that's based on the model of the junior high school. So with BOTS IQ, we don't necessarily have to build an arena. But if we want to grow the program and try to be the hub of Indiana County and be the robotics hub, since we're just doing some minor robotics in the grades four or five, Mr. Dolges and Mr. Huntington are doing robotics at the junior high. We're doing VEX robotics at the high school now, which is engineering side of robotics with electronics and doing programming and some, some small engineering. By adding the BOTS IQ program to that, then I think we have a really holistic approach to robotics, which I don't think any other school in the county is, is physically doing right now, where they're starting in four or five and coming all the way up through the, the senior high school. If you couple that with some of the contacts we made from UPJ as far as pre-engineering goes, we're trying to put together a whole package that can try to grow the student from grade four or five all the way up through high school and get them into an engineering school, whether it's mechanical, electrical, civil, whatever. So the numbers that you see there, the, the arena is included in that. We don't have a materials list put together yet to give you an exact cost on that. But know that that number would represent an arena that's twelve feet by twelve feet, not an eight foot by eight foot arena as what's at the junior high school. So the BOTS IQ bot is fifteen pounds, your bots are six. So you can imagine the mass carnage that could be had with a fifteen pound bot versus a six pound bot. So a plywood floor is not going to cut it, right? They're using three eighths, three eighths quarter inch plate on the bottom, and they're using three eighths Lexan on the walls, is that what they're using?
For the.
For the actual arena.
It's probably half inch.
Half inch on the bottom.
And three eighths.
So again, if we were going to grow this and say, okay, we compete in BOTS IQ, we do a couple of different preliminary challenges or, or testing sessions throughout the school year, we compete when it comes time in the spring. But then what happens? You have some bots that could probably still be functional. You could bring them in like the junior high student, like the junior high guys do. And we could have a big day where you have a robotics day of Indiana school district, and you could have the junior high going on. You could have exhibition matches with the fifteen pound bots, or it could be a whole entity in itself. So in terms of growing it, we can grow it, it's just following what you want to do.
Like Mark said, kind of encompass or visualize there, the bot is about twice as heavy. Generally, it's a, the bots that they're building at the junior high are a plastic and electrical motor component. These are aluminum billet, aluminum frame bots, again, twice the mass, the arena's a little over twice that size. To get us started to build one of those bots, we need the materials and, and the startup cost. We had visualized some equipment and tool chest in order to have this so you can go on the road. So really, you're taking a demolition derby vehicle with you, so there'll be some supplies and, and elements that way. The bot alone is about a twenty-five hundred dollar bot or so from what we're hearing from some districts in terms of what you're taking into the arena there and, and what you're trying, trying to work with. In order to, to build this bot, we've got a lot of tooling and machining. With this program, with BOTS IQ, they will align you with a local industry to help get some support that way. Maybe someone like JWF or Miller will be able to do some laser chassis cutting and some different things like that that we'll need beyond what we have at the school. We've tried to allow a little bit of idea for some additional tooling or millwork where I think we can do a lot of that in-house with our Vetric Aspire and our CAD/CAM software that we have. As the bot comes together, of course, you prototype with cardboard and laser cut elements that we all have within our program now. We're looking for the, the very least, if not the arena, to start the space. And we've been working with Mr. McQuaid and Mr. Heinrich, talked about a lot of rooms, but essential to have an area large enough to test drive these. Even if we can't deploy this massive lethal weapon, at least the area equivalent in size to where they'll be competing for agility drills. Trying to how to manipulate the robot within the area. We're gonna have to identify students who are strong drivers. If you're gonna put a twenty-five hundred dollar machine out there, you want to have students you know are competent in driving, manipulating that vehicle well. So internally, that, that's kind of in a meeting. As this moves on, we have a meeting next week with IEA in terms of, it is a little bit of a sport, there are some Saturdays and outside the competition things there. So it's a little bit of kind of starting down that, that coaching type program alignment there, just really on the ground floor in terms of even what that demand and what that hour requirement is. It's, there's a lot on that website to process through, and we've only had a couple of weeks and a couple of contacts there. But it is on the schedule, kind of pending word approval, pending more information. And I think Mr. Heinrich's looking forward to an update in terms of where we're at and some of the big fiscal and, and statistical needs, I guess.
Yeah, this is essentially a new class, it's a new course that we're starting here. So it falls under our curriculum, you know, responsibilities of this committee. It's definitely something we support, it hits all, it checks all the boxes as far as the steel standards, as far as the STEM initiatives that we've been trying to hit. You know, there's engineering, there's mathematics, there's design, there's all of these different elements combined with those twenty-first century skills of collaboration and critical thinking, et cetera. And then just a splash of fun too, it's gonna get these kids to draw into this program. So this is something that we are, we absolutely support, and it is on your agenda for tonight to approve. And I know it kind of feels rushed, usually I would have a much longer process feel, but we need to get it on the schedule for people to choose it so they have kids to teach in the fall because the schedule is upon us. So that's why there's kind of an accelerated timetable here. But I applaud the work they've done so far. You know, they've really been hustling this last couple of weeks. And, you know, Scott and we've been great partners for them and, you know, kind of helping them along the way. So this is, like, like Mark Ren said, this, this turning our school district into like the shining star of robotics and AI and that kind of thinking is really the big, hairy audacious goal. And I would love to, to make, see that become a reality with, you know, with these gentlemen leading the way here, so, so.
Well, that junior high, that was the most exciting event I attended for anything in the school district last year.
I'm happy I went to that, because I can envision this now.
The kids love it.
You have a date for this year?
May sixteenth. Write it down. As a matter of fact, we have, we've worked with Dr. Rommel, and he's doing something with the flight simulation and, and piloting. And they're gonna have a, a Black Hawk helicopter for people to view.
You said, you mean like a full-size Black Hawk?
Landed in the football field, that's right. So it's just, this is a big, a big event. And something that Dr. Heinrich, or Mr. Heinrich alluded to, this not only gets our kids towards engineering, but it also, at our level, and maybe at their level, a certain amount, also with the CTCs, you know, so if they, if they like machining, if they like the things that, that they would learn through us, it's, it's career pathways not only to college, but also to CTC. You know, it's, it's a wonderful program.
When you say the testing area is fifteen to twenty thousand, is that just materials? Or is that, is that an assembled piece?
They have to build it modularly, modularly, it's a twelve by twelve arena that they're working with. Like I said, they're taking a fifteen pound bot, spinning stuff at thirty-five hundred RPMs.
Is it a, is it, is that an assembled cost or is that a material cost? Or is that, or you don't know that?
We don't know that.
Yeah, just kind of eyeballing what it would take to make that a use.
Is there any chance of getting the ICTC involved in, in fabricating this?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and, and it's something that we can do in-house, the biggest thing.
Why can't I build ours?
Why, I know you did, but you have the normal skills.
But you're still, when you're.
Is that, is that, is that something to do with fabric?
It, it potentially could, but like you said, the, the first understanding is that, that right now, BOTS IQ, that competition is out some, you know, I mean, they choose a university.
It's somewhere else.
Moving forward, yeah, we'd have to find a, a room to substantiate where this thing would go, identify the door within which it has to fit. You know, that would impact the size of module units that you would put together on it. I think it could be done internally, we'd have to meet the specs and standards.
This, this fall, you would just need a twelve by twelve tape on the floor for, for manipulation.
Right, we would need to make it an enclosure, there doesn't even have to be twelve by twelve. It just has to be somewhere that's totally enclosed for driving and weapon tests so that if something does happen, it's totally enclosed and can't.
If you use the junior highs.
It'll destroy it.
Oh, no, no.
No.
It's only, it's only a.
No, I understand, but, but I'm, I'm trying to get you up and operating.
Right, I, I take some angle iron.
Less than fifty thousand dollars.
Angle iron on the floor. Establishing the envelope would give you some safety if it doesn't run off or something like that. So tap onto a concrete floor or.
You can do that in your current.
Some kind of.
In your current shops?
That's the challenge, the current shops are teaching thirteen other courses there. So that's where we've been after Mr. McQuaid for some square footage. We've had two or three ideas, we've bounced around kind of between administrators and some other programs within. There's even some ideas with some space freeing up at the junior high that maybe we could.
Take the Eisenhower space over.
Or, yeah, move something down that way. For example, across the hallway from us is autistic support through Aaron, and we thought maybe that was an opportunity to use that room, that was our first caveat. It's eight feet across the hall. The other thing is there's, you know, likely in two or so of these bots, you've got about five thousand dollars worth of electronical components and things. It would be nice to have that in a secured place where the safety of the arena and the safety of that equipment that your everyday students are, there's another access point to get to that. It's not just the, the.
So, so to, to follow up on Tom's point about the ICTC, in your presentation, you mentioned that you might have to go to JWF or Miller for some additional machine work that you do not have the capability of on-site, is that correct?
BOTS IQ actually will assign you a company like one of those companies for that affiliation.
Okay, because, because I think that may be an area where the ICTC perhaps could help. I think we're about ready to run over time here, so.
Yeah, we are, we're timed, so any, any. One other question I have, and you talked about you being in the league. Is there no, you have no obligation to the league as far as they don't ask for money? They're gonna give money, I know, but they don't ask for money for you to be members of the league?
No, there's, there's no dues or anything like that. Yeah, you, you show up with a team and you have to, you know, meet their, their rules in terms of services.
And then they pair you up with a company?
This is extending the junior high excitement that, that you saw down there, is in the kids too. And what I really liked about it was that there was probably twenty-five percent of your kids and girls that were. that were coming through your program and hitting this thing.
Maybe ten more.
More, even better, even better.
Well, last year, the girls' team won. It was an all-girl team.
Isn't that phenomenal? So, so my point is that gets, that gets that, that gender moving into, into sites where they, where they can certainly thrive.
And that'll be the goal of the schedule.
It breaks down a lot of barriers.
Oh, yeah.
The other thing I liked was, was when your program was forcing them to work as a team and, and developing their own expertise, you know, driver, designer, whatever else. That's, that's really important skills that these kids are developing. They're very, and I, and I'm stunned at their, at the quality that they're doing at the junior high. Extending that to the senior high with, with Bots that are four times as big.
That's one of the goals. We're figuring two instructors in the class to kind of break that down to models. There'll be a systems team, there'll be a skeleton team, you know, frame team there. Um, of course, all those elements have to come together to, to, to make it unit. But, uh, we've gotta, gotta take that down.
Well, thanks just to hear how you solve the coaching problem.
The, the battle itself is, is the fun, cool part that everybody likes to see. But when you look at the kids who take this manual thing and they go back to the pits, especially eleven, twelve, thirteen, but also for the high school kids. And they have to critically think like, what, what do I need to do to fix this? Because I have twenty minutes before I've gotta be back. And, and they're fixing things, they're working together and this person, they're all cross-trained. They can all do electronics, they can all do, you know, assembly, they can all operate. The, and so, and so they're working together to get this thing working. And that's, that's the best thing there is, is, is watching those kids work together. And they went pretty much spare hours. Yes.
Sounds good. Are we good with this? Yes, definitely.
Thank you very much. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for your admission. They wanted to do this.
Next, we have the advertising contract with Indiana Area Education Foundation.
It's in. Everyone, Russell Bopp, I'm one of the, uh, members for the Board of the Indiana Area Education Foundation. I know that we're running behind, so I'll try to keep it brief here. But I have two kids in our school district. One is in kindergarten here at East Spike and another one's in second grade here at East Spike. So from Mr. Springer. So, um, appreciate all of the important work that you all do for our school district and for my kids. Um, specifically for you tonight is the Indiana Area Education Foundation proposal for a contract for advertising. And our foundation was formed so that we could really.
Board package online.
Oh, it's online.
Online.
Okay, they don't have.
Don't have the copy from there?
I'll just.
I can make copies if you'd like.
No.
I can just give you a general description. I mean, the foundation was formed so that we could come alongside.
Oh, I have that with me. I'm sorry. It's okay, it's okay.
So that we could come alongside the, uh, school board here in Indiana and so that we could support our kids and all of the different booster programs. There are many times throughout the school year that this board might get a request for funding that wasn't in the budget. And the purpose and thought behind the foundation is that we can do our own fundraising in the community through all sorts of different events. Uh, we really just got kind of kick-started this past year. We're not even fully up for a full year. And we've raised a lot of different funds through spaghetti dinners and golf outings. And, you know, we've already started giving that back to the community through, um, there's a teacher grant program where we're gonna give teachers, um, funds to do different projects in their classrooms and all sorts of things that are great for our school district and great for my kids and, and really for everyone. So this contract here that we're proposing is to allow the foundation to manage the advertising on four booster programs within school district property. And we would take the logistics, the administration, all of those things, the requests for this specific booster advertising, for this fundraiser, et cetera, for any signage on, on any of the school district fields. I mean, the football field is a great example. Um, they would have to come to the foundation. We would look at the proposal for what they would have. We would approve it or not based on, you know, what, what could be up at the field based on the guidelines that, of course, you have set. Um, and we would facilitate that and have it for a specific term. They would have a contract with us. And the foundation would take an administrative fee for doing that, um, which we would, since we're a nonprofit foundation, that's gonna go back into the school district and back into, you know, our extracurricular activities for our kids.
What would that percentage, or would that be a percentage or what?
Yeah, it would be a percentage, um, but we haven't decided what it would be, um, really. It, it's gotta be something that allows these boosters to do their fundraising, right? So I'd say around twenty percent would probably be what we would look at, ten to twenty percent. Um, but that hasn't been decided. The found, the board, the foundation, um, the board would have to vote on that and approve it. If, this wouldn't be the exclusive means for those boosters to fundraise, though. This is only for signage. If the, if somebody wanted to queue, to go and fundraise for football boosters, they could do a, any kind of fundraiser. It doesn't have to be a signage fundraiser, which is what this would address. They would have to come to us, we would set parameters, approve, and then we would take a part of that because we are gonna be managing it. And then, of course, we're also here to support all of these different extracurriculars anyway.
So like, how can it be set up where, I mean, one, I mean, I think twenty percent is, is kind of high. Uh, and, I mean, I, I think all that needs to be laid out before we approve something because I, I wanna know how much percentage is going to every, be transparent about it. Two is like, what, like Many Thon, they do Many Thon, they put up signs in the school, in the gymnasium that day. What, is that gonna be under your umbrella?
No.
No?
No.
No, Many Thon would be our students advertising within our district. It wouldn't be, you know.
Okay.
So these are only groups that have booster programs?
And we have not, we have not met with the, oh, sorry, Sue. We have not met with the boosters yet.
No, we talked about that, but the, the foundation didn't really, we don't know what we're selling them if we don't have a contract. So it's kind of like if we go to the boosters and say, hey, here's this opportunity to raise this money by selling, by buying signs, but we don't have the authority to, to sell the signs to them, we're not really, we don't have anything to offer them, you know, basically. So that, so we've not, we talked about that. That's the next step in the plan is to pull the heads of all the boosters together and present this all to them. Uh, but that, that meeting has not happened yet.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I, I believe that we need to meet with them first, let them know what's going on because these boosters have raised thousands and thousands of dollars.
Every year.
Every year.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I think they need to give a heads up of, here's what we're planning and get, may, have them give some input. Because I know at the last minute, I think that was the last time we ended. Walt, you said it, we need to get all the booster groups together to lay that foundation or explain it. So I'd like to see that done before, I, I mean.
But I, I, I still agree that that needs to be done. The question is, at, at what point, I think is what we're really, really trying to figure out here. Um, so, so if the contract isn't approved before we go to the boosters, is there a way to approve an overall plan or concept? Take that to the boosters that the contract can be based on?
Wow.
Okay, so, I, I mean, I think Rob's got a good point. You'd like to have something.
It's on our board page right now.
Yeah, see, I'm interested.
I, I looked at it, but I need to look at it more.
I, I think we need to have something in writing to hand to the boosters. It, even if it's not a, uh, formally approved or a contract, but at least a plan for them to, to evaluate rather than just, just a concept.
The other thing I'd like to see is, I mean, other districts that I know that do fundraising with boosters and everything's run through athletics. I mean, I'd like to know, like, other districts that run this through a foundation and what their thoughts are and how successful or problems they've had. Where, I mean, I don't have any of that background information. So, I mean, I, I don't mind the sense that we do this, but I, I mean, I, I don't think we have enough information right now, especially with these fees that will be taken out. Because like, if I, when I give money to IEP, I can designate exactly what percentage I want to go. So if, if I'm advertising on a sign on the football field, if I want five hundred to go to football, three hundred to go to softball, two hundred to go to baseball or with soccer, whatever it may be. I mean, as the donor, as the person who gives the money, business or whatever, we should be able to designate where we want that money to go and if we want anything to go to the foundation or not.
You could still do that.
Without.
No.
The difficulty is.
At least I won't go say something.
I'm just confused. Would the boosters then be required to go through this foundation?
Just for signage, just for any, any advertising signage. It's not for all of their fundraisers. This is not shutting the boosters off. They have all sorts of fundraisers. They can do T-shirts, they can do cookies, they can do subs, they can knock on doors and sell anything they want. It's just consolidating signage for the school district and trying to get rid of the logistical and administrative nightmare.
That was a good question. I'm happy that was clarified. Are there any booster leaders, I wanna say, on the foundation? Any of the sports boosters, members of the foundation?
I don't know the answer to that question. I know that there are representatives that are involved in these sports. I know that there's at least a lacrosse person, there's a, a football coach. I don't know if he's part of the boosters or not, but he is someone that, you know, is involved in. And that, um, I talked to Tim McFarland today from the football boosters. He's supportive of this situation. So, you know, so I think the, I think the boosters will get on board. This is, this is opening an opportunity for the boosters that doesn't currently exist for them. So for them to have that opportunity to buy the signage and then for the foundation to take the, their fee and turn around and put it right back into the kids, it seems like a win-win.
Right, right, and, and, and that's good. I'm, I just don't want, um, uh, what do I wanna say? To feel like this was already decided and they didn't have some input, even though maybe you don't want their input. Because you were saying right now they can't do any signage with it, you know, to advertise. Um, okay.
Tom.
Yeah, I, I just, I don't wanna get the boosters upset because they are very.
Oh, yeah.
They work so hard and they do a lot for the school.
Right now, right now, right now, we get zero for signage.
I understand.
And we've talked about it for a decade.
I understand, but that's part of the problem.
And the board hasn't been able to put it together, um, in the signage of our facilities.
I understand.
And, and so, um, um, money could go back to the boosters. It could go all to, I, I think twenty percent is too low. But, because they're gonna be able to market the signage unified, unified, unified. Okay, they're gonna come to me and say, I'm gonna get a brochure from the, from the foundation that says you can advertise at least three things at three hundred dollars a year, blah, blah, blah. Okay, and where does that, and how do you assign that money? Okay, does that go to, I could pick it or, but, but all the money that goes to the foundation is going back to our kids. And what I'm worried about is, is that's drama, that's, um, cross-country. Okay, people that don't have facilities. And these, 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 these smaller athletic events have very tiny budgets right now on the boosters group. You know, their softball raises three thousand dollars a year, that's pretty, that's spectacular. Um, and unlike, unlike, unlike a lot of bigger, the bigger booster groups, the band. Um, but, um, I'd, I'd like to get, um, an understanding of, of, of what it is you're doing so that when it's presented, it's presented as, as a framework. If you present it as, we're gonna do this, we're gonna have a lot of, there's gonna be a lot of cooks in the, in the scoop. Right now, there's zero dollars coming in from advertising on our facilities. Okay, so this is all new money. And I can tell you at the Optimus, at Optimus Park, that those, that those field signs fund probably twenty, twenty-five percent of our budget every year. And the nice thing with those field signs is that they're pretty cheap. And so people sign back up every year with a very little bit of effort.
A hundred percent of it goes to.
Hundred percent of it goes to the Optimus.
Yeah, we buy ninety, ninety dozen baseballs a year.
It's, it's almost exactly the same design. So the Optimus Club raises the money, they give it to the boosters and the softball.
They don't keep any. They, they give more than, they, they give out more than they actually bring in.
Every year?
Yeah.
Every year, how do you?
I mean, for Little Lake, because the Optimus, under the Optimus is Little Lake, so they have their own separate leg under the Optimus. So they have their own financials. The Optimus has their financials, but they, they fund things, they, for different fundraisers, just like they had a gun bash. Well, it's not, you can't do a gun bash under Little Lake. We do it under the Optimus because then it, then we.
Exactly the same.
The proceeds, but all the proceeds go to the Little Lake.
Correct. This would be almost like.
There's no dollars being consumed by the foundation here. Now, if, if you take, if you take twenty thousand dollars, it's going back into cost scholarships and, and things that are happening for our kids.
Right.
Not necessarily going back to football helmets, but it could.
No, no, yeah, but that's why I think, cuz, cuz I think I'd love to be able to say, hey, I want my thousand dollars, maybe two hundred fifty go to FPLA. I just had to write a four hundred and sixty-five-dollar check for my son to go on to states that the district gives not one penny.
Right, and this is something the foundation could have funded.
Yeah, but I mean, I think as a donor, I think they should have that ability to say, hey, I want five hundred to go to football, but I want two fifty to go to FPLA, that bucket.
You can do that now.
There is a way you can do that. So we have buckets set up in the foundation that you can say where you want it to go. Like we had that anonymous donor that wanted it specifically to go to STEM.
Yeah.
And the foundation worked very hard to make sure that that got to the right spot. So there, there are ways to do that.
But, but, but if you're buying a sign, this is, this is the set of rules for the signs. Okay, so if I spend three hundred dollars on a sign, three hundred dollars goes to them and then they disperse it. Okay, so two hundred dollars goes to football. Okay, maybe, maybe I can say, like I do for my university, I can check those boxes. Okay, but some of this money has to go back to the foundation or the foundation just becomes another athletic booster and doesn't, doesn't send a kid to FLBA.
F L B A. So I think we need to disclose that. I, I mean, I'd like to see all that.
It would definitely be in a contract with the booster. Like, so this wouldn't be a surprise. The booster who cannot advertise on school property currently, we would propose a contract to them. They would see exactly what our fee is. And, you know, if there was a problem with that, I mean, we could talk to them about it. But the point is to be reasonable. And then if they had a, if there was a business that wanted to donate or an individual family that wanted to buy a sign and designate the money for something, we already have that mechanism in place.
Then the other question I, and I talked to you, Rob, is like, are sports athletic teams that are off, off-site?
Yeah, that's another thing we have to tackle, whether we have to work with.
I'm assuming, I'm assuming that as soon as we get this set up, one of the conversations will be with White Township on how we, how we, how we work with that.
And we don't wanna step on their toes either, but we, we definitely wanna partner wherever we can.
Yeah, well, and, and they're not gonna be, they're not gonna be against this. Okay, they're gonna wanna piece the pie, but, but they got big fields and we do a lot of stuff with them.
And there might be a situation where baseball already is doing this at White Township.
They are doing it.
As a thing, so I don't wanna undo what they're doing. No one does. We just wanted to come up with a, a three-win solution here. One was, who's gonna manage it? The foundation will take the management. Number one. Number two is how do we make sure that all boosters have the same opportunity to participate? They can do that for us. And the third thing is there's a small liability that goes with this. Through the contract, you'll see that the, uh, um, that the foundation is gonna take out an insurance policy and indemnify the board of any responsibility thereof. So it insulates the board, it helps the boosters, it helps the foundation. It's a, it's a win-win-win. And I printed off copies of the contract out.
And gets it done, which is awesome.
I mean, obviously something I support. We, you know, we worked pretty hard on this, but, you know, if, um, you know, if you guys want more information, we can bring it back. But I think the, to the foundation's point, without anything, without any approval, they have nothing to sell. You know, so that's really where we're at.
So Tim McFarland was fine, as we talked, because I talked to him earlier today and he did not.
Well, he was, that must have prompted his call because he called me and said, hey, who's saying what? And I said, here's what's happening. And he said, oh, I, I got you guys, I support that. So that's, that was the conversation I had with him.
And this is just a one-year agreement?
It's a one-year agreement. That's a good point. And if it doesn't work to your liking, you don't have to approve it next year.
Yeah. Yep.
But I do wanna thank Attorney Bopp and the entire foundation, especially Rusty for taking time out of his evening to call me.
Yes, sir, that you have to, really appreciate it. That's a lot of work.
All right, thank you, sir. And I'll get those copies right here as soon as we get to the next thing, but. Okay.
We have four things active on the agenda.
And I'm a little behind, so I will, I will be quick. In front of you tonight are four examples, and we have Mr. Springer here to go over some of the fine details and answer any questions you have about report cards. We were requested by the committee that we bring the report cards forward to you to, to look at. There's nothing on the agenda tonight, we don't have to take any action, but I did want to offer you an opportunity to look at what we currently use, make recommendations, suggestions, feedback, et cetera, for Dawn and Kelly and Aaron and myself to take back. The goal here, so you know, is we don't, the current administration doesn't see a whole lot of value in letter grades in the early childhood era, right? Between now and grade five, a letter grade means nothing, okay? We want to move toward a standards-based report card. For those of you who understand what standard-based report card, this is not that. That's a far cry from a standards-based report card. However, it is the first step in the right direction. This is more of a skills-based report card, based on the program that we have in place now. We want to take the next step, we want to move towards standards-based report cards. But we did want to let you know the reason, the why behind this. To a student who is learning how to read, B means nothing, right? That gives the parent no feedback, it gives the teacher no feedback. What we'd like to do is say, of this set of skills that, you know, demonstrate effective reading skills, your student is, has mastered these, is proficient in these, and is still developing in these skills here. So the parent now knows where they can help, how they can help us help their kid. So that's really the, the goal behind all this. Full disclosure, this does not get that done. Um, I think we're, we still have some work to do here, but this is the current iteration of that process. So all questions are welcome and, and comments and feedback is welcome. And again, this is not something we have to act on tonight, so we just wanted to, you know, start the conversation before we move forward. Does it still need thunder from you, Dawn? I don't want to, do you have any comments or?
No, I just, we're in, um, we're in process. We still have some, obviously some things we need to work through. It always is challenging to want to go standards-based. What we don't want to put out is a five-page report card that a parent has to look at. But then when you start to tailor it back, we end up with categories parents don't necessarily understand. So it becomes that balance of trying to figure out, like, how do we accurately kind of portray how their child is doing in a kindergarten classroom or a first-grade classroom? That's kind of the overall plan behind this. We created, um, I guess one of the new items on the report card, or habits of a successful learner. That was something that was, it's, it's a little different grade to grade, but the concept is the same. Just looking at how the student is in the classroom. Uh, we also have, like, for example, like the kindergarten report card, like how they address the writing component. That is, you got options as far as where their child is during quarter one, quarter two. Just trying to work through this. And also the other, I guess, the other challenge in this is, is that a parent has a child that's in kindergarten, third and fifth grade, like trying to create a report card that's a little more, like, common, but yet we teach things that are so very different. It's just been challenging trying to balance that out. And, you know, a report card going home shouldn't be an assignment for a parent to spend twenty minutes trying to figure out what it's, what it's going to tell them. That's kind of been the, has been, has been a, has been a difficult process for us.
Yeah, and that's why this is not a true standards-based report card. If we had every aspect of every standard on there, it would be a seven-page report card.
Oh, at least.
We'd have to hold classes on how to read and things. So this is where we've worked and the teachers created this. That's an important thing to note, is we put them in committees and this is a teacher-generated report card.
Is this news, is that?
Uh, the third grade one is, is new.
Okay.
But first is kindergarten and first have been using skills-based report cards for a while. Second grade is now in year two of this, third grade is new this year. So, and the plan is to roll it up. So if you're a parent of a student in third grade, you never knew that there was a grade-based report card before. So you don't, you just use two standards-based or skills-based as it turns out.
So, so one question that I have, first of all, I love the idea of this section on habits of the successful learner. But I'm wondering whether or not we should expand that a little bit. Because what you're really talking about here are soft skills that all employers are looking for. And, and, and maybe it, and to send a subtle message, which I think over time the kids will pick up as well as the parents, maybe it should be habits of a successful learner and future citizen. Or something to imply that this is not just what you need to do when you're here in school, but this is what you're going to do throughout your entire lifetime if you're going to be successful in whatever endeavors you have. And maybe that's too wordy, but, and I'll leave it up to you guys to, to maybe smith that a little bit. But I think there should be something that's not just about learning today, but this is what you're going to expect from you throughout your entire life. But I love the section and, and what you're doing in that.
Thank you.
You use, um, you use an X periodically, but you don't tell me what it is.
Use a what?
X. There's an X on the.
That is, that is where that child is currently performing in the semi-phenetic state.
But it doesn't, there's no key.
It, it is just, it is just, it's, it's a child, it's, um, the writing shows the beginning, understanding of the connection between letters and the speech sounds they represent. Like those are the, all the.
No, what I'm saying is the X doesn't.
It's right above it, the X indicates the state of the child.
That's where they're at currently.
It's not in this.
You're expecting it to be right there.
I'm expecting it to be right there.
I see, okay. See, that's the way I'm trying to make, like, make sense to us. Somebody else, absolutely.
I never saw the program.
Yeah, yeah, and that's what parents might do, so that's good.
Dr. Regan, interesting time, if you want to take that, digest it, next, put it back on the agenda next time, I think that would be good. Because we really do want your feedback and we want your input. Ms. Josie, I will email you a copy of each and, uh.
She's still there?
So, but we'll, I'll email the whole committee a copy, so you guys can look over it then.
Thank you.
And we'll put it back on the agenda next month and we'll continue the conversation, okay?
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Springer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, yeah, the next couple should be quick. Aludo is a partnership, and you have a, a small flyer on your, at your place about, with some stats about Aludo. Thank you, Mr. Bob. Aludo is a partnership with Westmoreland, Westmoreland Internet Intermediate Unit Seven and the Aaron IU twenty-eight to establish a, an online, sometimes asynchronous, sometimes synchronous, learning platform for professionals. So this is a professional development, um, platform that offers college-level credits, master's-level credits. It offers some, uh, continuing ed credits that are not necessarily accredited for, you know, for credit through a university or, or specially-designed PD topics that, that are already either preloaded or we can customize, which is the really nice, um, the attractive thing here. We challenge, we're, we struggle all the time to try to figure out how to get the right kind of PD to the right groups of teachers without boring the, the socks off all of the others, you know what I mean? So rather than putting them all in an auditorium and talk about something that only applies to, you know, sixty of them, we would like to assign certain professional development to other, to certain groups of teachers. Other teachers would be able to, uh, choose their professional development plan based on, uh, through what we call professional learning communities, which is a, uh, through a differentiated vision model, we have that opportunity for students, uh, for teachers to drive their own instruction or drive their own learning. So that's really where Aludo comes in here. It gives, yeah, you should go home, sorry. If you're feeling well, go home.
I mean, I thought if I gave it to somebody, it was like, okay, for me?
I do appreciate you seconding up and coming.
Thank you for coming, thank you.
You can tell you're in early elementary, you want to share everything.
As you mentioned that, I did look and everybody just kind of mistaking themselves.
Oh, you can't get me. So, thanks, Dawn. So as you can see through here, there's a couple of different things that are already preloaded on there, asynchronous PD content. So if we're talking about writing strategies and we want our fourth and fifth grade teachers to work on writing strategies for improving writing output in the classroom, they can sign up for that. If we have another group of, like, first-year teachers who really need to work on classroom management skills, we can assign them that. And it's in time, on their, at their own pace kind of learning. So they can save it for certain act eighty days where we have time set aside for it, or they can do it on their own. And then we might go to work with the union at some point and work some sort of trade-off. For example, we have a day at the end of the year this year where there's four hours of time when all the kids are gone and the teachers just be closing up their rooms. They all desperately want to not have to come that day, and I don't blame them. So if they would do four hours of online training, this could be an offset for that, you know? It just, because then we get something that we want, which is their professional growth. And they get what they want, which is that day in June off so they can get better, you know, deals at the future. So that is, uh, that's the proposal. Now here's the cost. The cost is a certain, uh, it's a certain number per student. For us to be all-in with all of our professionals is around sixteen thousand dollars. Now, sixteen thousand dollars is the startup cost, it will be slightly less in each subsequent year. But with that sixteen thousand dollars, we get access to all the preloaded stuff and that customization, where I can reach out to the IUs and say, I want classes on this, this, and this, and they will build them over the summer. And they'll be available specifically for our teachers in the fall, so.
And it's, it's cheaper than if the teachers would take IUP credits or another university credit and then the district would have to reimburse for those credits? This could possibly save some of that, those tuition costs.
Correct.
And didn't you tell me too, that other employee, it doesn't, like, we could train pairs, like, there could be a, a learning.
Correct, trade the pairs on certain things.
Platform for pairs, so it wouldn't just be teachers, but also anybody working, you know, nurses could have a platform, everybody.
I mean, if you have to bring in speakers on those topics, it's going to cost money.
Oh, yes, people are expensive.
And Jared could probably tell you better than I could, the number of dollars that we spend on our teachers taking similar classes at IU three or something like that, and this, this will offset those costs as well. So it's, although sixteen thousand, you know, it's not that bad.
But the teachers don't pay anything now when they take it, so we're not reimbursing that. One cost sixteen thousand dollars for as many teachers as many, because they want to.
Yes, ma'am.
Since this is a work session, let's ask the teacher what he thinks of this.
The, the system? I mean, PD is always challenging, especially for me, economically, specialty areas, so like.
You have to be bored in so many of them.
Yeah, I mean, they do a good job of letting, I mean, they do let us curtail to like our specialty, but sometimes unavoidable. It sounds like a great opportunity to let us.
That's what I think.
Diversify a little.
I agree, yeah.
We also do goring in services that didn't pertain to this.
It's awful.
I like this.
So, well, kidding.
Yeah, any questions?
And once we're in it, what if we don't like it?
We quit, we'll sign a picture.
We just say, I quit.
That's it, just say, I'm sorry, IU twenty-eight and IU seven, we are pulling out of the Aludo partnership.
Okay.
So, that's it.
Nice. And I'm assuming there's others like special ed options and lots of things.
Yeah, there are, literally.
Any speechy kind of stuff?
Yeah, and then we, and Dr. Price, we can actually customize it. So if you have good ideas for us, we can actually build that in.
Do you mean to teach them or to take them? Because I have a day job, just so.
But yes, there's lots and lots and lots of opportunities, so.
Is everybody okay with moving that forward?
Yes.
Summer school can be really brief. Do you guys still want to have summer school the same way we've done it the last several years? I, it's kind of preloaded this in our, in our board report. It's been working, uh, we had some problems, we worked out at the beginning. I think we're in, it's good a spot as we can be right now using the online platform for those kids. It's still not perfect, I don't know that there is a perfect summer school solution, but, um, if we, unless there's a serious objection, we need to post those positions and start to put together the advertisements for the families, um, like we did last year.
Everybody have any issues with continuing?
Well, let's make it better.
Yeah, keep, keep going. Yes, sir, okay. And then finally, the, the last thing is, I attached to the digital copy, the, uh, the entire comprehensive plan, and I'll keep this brief as well. I had a, I have a nice presentation I'll, I'll send to you and post it online. Because as it turns out, by law, I have to post it online anyway. So, uh, we had, we just finished, I think, finished our comprehensive planning process. We had fifty-six stakeholders from throughout the community partner with us and give us, um, they did, they did the whole process. They did a SWOT analysis, which stands for strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, just like you guys did. We had teachers from every level and every building, we had administrators from every building, we had parents, we had community partners, expert friends, and even students. We had six students that sat in and provided us input. And the board members participated too, although we kind of did that in a, in a different way this year. This year, through the board visioning sessions that you all did, you set some pretty specific goals that you wanted. Um, and those goals are things like students being able to read by the end of grade three, students being proficient in ELA skills by grade five, students being able to be proficient in math skills by the end of grade five. Now, the, the goal is reads all students by the end of grade three. We know that realistically, we probably will never reach that goal, right? But that doesn't excuse us of the, of the responsibility to strive for, right? Uh, so we set that bar high and we worked for that. You also put, um, all students should be able to explain scientific phenomenon and design science-based solutions to problems by the end of grade eight. The board visioning was really, we want them to be proficient in the steel standards. So as we shift to these steel standards, that has to be a priority, and that came out of the visioning session. You also listed, um, citizenship, improve the student behaviors to reduce discipline referrals. Focus on the, uh, specifically physical aggression is something we're seeing arise in, um, making sure our schools are safe. We also talked about attendance being a problem, we want to reduce chronic absenteeism. So that was something that came out of the visioning. As far as the work environment, ensuring the appropriate distribution of resources to address the data trends, staffing the schools appropriately so that we have reasonable class sizes was something that came out of your work. And then looking, started to take a deeper dive into the, um, cell phones and the technology generation here in these cellphone-based, uh, childhoods and how they're affecting the mental health of, of our students. All of those things.
Speaking of which, I brought you this article, Jared, I told you about it, that you can share with your staff. She's a great psychiatrist, and, um, you've heard of her. She's, um, Anna, I think you can see. Anyway, it's quite an article, goes on, she does a whole interview about where she sees this in schools and everything else. And it's, it's not a pleasant lead.
No, no, and there's a lot of research emerging about these, about this generation of kids and the problems that we face as educators trying to. To a new child, so, so those were the goals that you, that you set. We should, we use those goals as guides to our professional development, uh, or not, to our comprehensive plan. And we came up with twelve goals, and these twelve goals I'll share with you, but I'll go with briefly here. We want to make sure that through the implementation of restorative practices that a hundred, in a hundred percent of our schools, that we improve conflict resolution skills and overall school climate for all involved, both the teachers and the kids. And we reduce discipline referrals and suspensions by twenty percent over the next three years. We want to implement a comprehensive social learning and mental health and wellness curriculum, specifically teaching these students about the dangers of complete, always being connected to your phones and, and never unplugging. We want to work and find some sort of evidence-based program or some cutting-edge program that will actually teach these kids of those dangers and hopefully create a, a healthier, uh, student. We want to restructure, uh, restructure the design of our tiered support system of mental health. Look at our counselor job descriptions, look at the way the groups were running, and make sure that we have a tiered approach to support the students who are struggling with mental health and make sure that these resources are there and targeted toward need and reduce specifically suicidal ideation, which is super high compared on our pay survey. And where that depression is coming from, we believe is connected. So we want to, through a, a revamping of those supports, we want to make sure we reduce suicidal ideation by fifty percent. And this is the goals that the committee has all come to, to establish. We want to strengthen our PBIS implementation throughout the district. PBIS, for those of you who don't speak, you know, the educator is positive behavior and, and intervention and supports. And that's where we, again, explicitly teach the expected behavior. We reward students for demonstrating those positive behaviors. And we, we target by looking at discipline logs, areas that we need to instruct students on specific behaviors. And we make sure that that happens. Through this revamping of PBIS and a strengthening of that, we hope to, again, improve positive climate and a sense of belonging by as much as twenty percent as measured by our school climate survey that we produce every, every spring. So hopefully the students will feel like they feel safer, more engaged, and more in, uh, able to, better equipped to meet our expectations for behavior. You know, there's that thing where we teach them how to read and we teach them how to do math, but we just punish them for, for when they don't know how to behave. We want to stop that, we want to teach them what the expectations are and then model it and then reward it. Through the ca, uh, creation of family engagement committees at each school, we're going to foster better partnerships with families, increase and improve family relationships as demonstrated by an increase in student and family participation in school programs. By the end of the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year, we want to decrease chronic absenteeism across all grade levels, returning to pre-pandemic levels. We dropped about six percent. Six percent more students are now chronically absent as per the state's definition than they were before the pandemic. We need to get back to that ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent of students on level because that translates to about fifty students per school who are now at risk of not succeeding because of that absenteeism. We want to recalibrate our multi-tiered system of support and continue our growth in ELA and show growth on the standardized test and return to pre-pandemic levels in ELA. We want to do the same for math, except the good news is in math, we're actually at pre-pandemic levels already, so we want in most, in most grade levels. So we want to continue to see growth there, and we expect to see about a ten percent improvement over the next three years. We want to tightly align our curriculum instruction to the steel standards, and we hope in the first year when the test changes, we don't see it drop. We just want to maintain it first, and then in the subsequent years, we will see some growth in, on the science test as well. We want to focus on writing, um, and managing individualized education plans. We're in TSI, which is Targeted School Improvement for our students with disabilities not growing. growing, um, and not achieving. We need to address that. Uh, we think that starts with writing better IEPs, and then building systems where the IEPs are adjusted if they're not working at a more regular basis, and Tara's in charge of that. We have the, uh, right? Using evidence-based instructional strategies in inclusive classrooms with a hundred percent of the general special education teachers trained in differentiated instruction, universal design for learning, strategic instructional model, and other data-driven instructional teaching, we will see an improvement in twenty percent in academic performance for students with disabilities measured across the district. Uh, through the execution and effective, uh, execution of effective data team processing in every school, we'll create a data-driven culture where we don't make decisions because we think it's happening, we make decisions because we can show you that it's happening or not happening.